Thirty. Can you take the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fischel.
Here.
Mr. Keeney.
Here.
Ms. Brewster.
Here.
Mrs. Grassi. Ms. Kreninsky.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Okay, Stanford pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And make a motion to amend the agenda. Two items, one for two B, the special report by the board president to go after the Stiefel Nicholas and Company item, and also to remove item three B, the transfer of funds. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can you take the roll?
So, to be clear, we're, we are removing the transfer, which is, which is B.
Three B.
And what was the other one, sir?
Uh, two B, special report will go after Stiefel Nicholas and Company.
Okay, two B.
Which is three D, and then it'll follow.
Got it. Got it. Ms., Ms., Mrs. Kreninsky.
Aye.
Ms. Brewster.
Aye.
Mr. Keeney.
Aye.
Mr. Fischel.
Aye.
Motion carries four O.
Was there a second? I'm sorry, just want to make sure.
Mr. Keeney.
Mr. Keeney was the second.
Okay, special report, Mr. Briscoe.
Can y'all hear me okay? No? Testing, testing. Okay. Maybe it'll work better if I hold it. Testing, testing. Everybody good? All right, perfect. All right, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is James Briscoe. I am, uh, from the Briscoe Consulting Group. Uh, we are located in Houston, Texas. Uh, my work is specialized in the public education sector. My work is, uh, my work is simple. It is vetted in making sure that we design and we give recommendations around financial mechanisms that, uh, look through a lens of keeping the student first. So that, this is why we, uh, do this work. I do want to clarify, um, what we've been invited to do and what we've done is an independent financial review of the Riverside, uh, school district. Um, this is not an audit, nor am I an auditor. Uh, how does difference, the difference between the financial review and the audit, uh, my consultant firm, we don't bill financials, nor do we sign off on financials. What we do is use a forensic style, and it's different from a forensic audit. We use a forensic-style investigation where we look on past data that includes your, uh, audited financials, your general ledgers, your check registers, uh, your monthly reports. Um, we look at things like, uh, your, your purchasing reports. We look at, uh, your top vendors, meaning, um, the money that was spent per vendor, and we look at other exhibits that are given to us by your business office, and we examine those for best practice solutions, recommendations, and what we also like to do is point out the shrinks of the district. Before I get started, there's no criminal activity that's been noted. Again, we're not an investigative firm. When those types of things happen, we turn those over to the proper authorities so they can handle their business and do their due diligence there. Um, there's no mal, any type of malpractice or necessarily any misappropriations. What we do is take the work that was done in your district and we build upon the shoulders of that work of your state auditor. And again, we like to hand over a practitioner model that is a collective of recommendations that are not mandates, but options, and to look through multiple lenses as we examine your financial health. And think about the multiple lenses as such. Your hand, it has many bones in it, right? And you can break a bone on the bottom of your hand, but if the x-ray doesn't x-ray the bottom of your hand, you won't be able to locate that bone. What we know about school finance is it's a collective of mini-funds that are all allocated for different purposes. But those funds come together to work together to ultimately empower your school district. So with that, I'd like to get started. That's kind of the, uh, overview. What I would like to do is start with some of the observations and concerns that were identified as I, um, navigated through your financials to fill this report. Um, first, budget, uh, your, your key budget observations and your budget management observations were as follows. Current bur, uh, I'm sorry, current budget materials provided a detailed line item, but a limited narrative explanation and visuals for the board. And what I'm referring to is the monthly board packets that I was, uh, presented with. They were good, but again, our goal is to find best practices to go from good to great or to improve all of your, um, financial activities. There are no, uh, regularly structured, uh, variance analysis. I didn't see a mid-year budget to actual review. The board should understand variance spending within functions. Now, uh, as I go through this report, I do want the, uh, board administration and the public to understand, you're going to hear me refer to, um, coding. And there are three main takeaways from coding. There, you're going to hear me mention fund, and fund is where the money is legally housed. You're going to hear me, uh, reference function. Function tells the purpose of the dollar. So each, each expenditure or a revenue will have a function code, and it identifies the, it identifies the purpose of the expenditure or revenue stream. And then you're going to hear me say object, and object just basically tells you what it is. What was purchased or what was received in that object code. So you're going to hear me refer to those three pieces of your code segment often. Next observation, uh, the district currently maintains a strong, uh, general fund reserve. But these are on a downward trajectory to a planned spending deficit in the coming years. Continued reliance on a reserve, uh, on the fund balance reserve may end up in a situation where adjustments may be made. You may have to look at staffing. Uh, we may have to look at things like your, uh, teacher-to-student ratio to make the, um, proper adjustments if we continue to see a downward trajectory as it goes to your fund balance. Next, your check registry. The check registry review, lower entries with zero quantity, negative unit price, missing descriptions. Reduce, what that does, it reduces transparency and weakens audit trails. So when you use this resource to identify, uh, purchasing activity, it makes it difficult to, uh, audit, to have an audit trail and to identify what, when, and how things were purchased. Next, several accounts consistently appeared over budget or minimal use after year after year. Um, what this does, when account codes aren't reconciled, at least on a monthly basis, it's hard to present accurate financials to the board, and it limits the autonomy that the board will have to make on-demand decisions. And next, there was, there were transactions that appeared to be made without the proper board authority, meaning that there were some individual account codes that had no budget but transactions. Typically, from the lens of a third party, when that type of activity is seen, it, again, it's not criminal, it's not necessarily against board policy. However, this type of activity should be disclosed, uh, justified and clarified when you have a budget code that is operating without a budget assigned to it, but it has transactions. Next, misaligned account codes. We had some account codes that included operational service codes under instructional accounts. So again, you're going to hear me talk about account codes. Um, instructional codes are codes that affect, uh, affect the classroom, that impact the classroom. So these particular codes should not have a code that's a company, an object code that accompanies that code that identifies an operational service. It should have a matching code that identifies it as an instructional, uh, instructional expense. Uh, the PI funds, the permanent improvement funds. Um, there were some expenditures that were not coded according to your, uh, financial accountability guide, as well as some descriptions that did not meet the criteria of what, uh, PI funds should be used for. And there was a lack of routine internal, um, reporting when it came to errors. Typically, when, uh, codes get out of whack from an accounting perspective, there's a report called an exceptions report that's typically provided to your board or typically provided to your auditors at the end of the year, and it describes the anomalies or the irregular use of codes that are not in alignment with your financial accountability guide. Next, um, we ran a historical analysis over your functions. There were instances of underspending when it came to, uh, certain functions, and we will cover this later in the, uh, presentation. Uh, there was a portion where instruction was underspent, um, in one particular year that I pulled that I'm going to consider an anomaly, and we'll examine that in detail. And there were some situations where, again, the, uh, conservative practice of underbudgeting, again, can cripple decision-making if it's not disclosed to your board properly. For example, uh, any situation where, um, we're building conservative budgets, meaning that we're building reserves and we're planning to try to retain and save money, those things should be documented in a narrative-style report and presented to the board accordingly. Next, uh, financial data and operational decisions are disconnected in the transportation, uh, area. There were some codes that I flagged that we will get into later that, um, they could, they could be transportation-related, but there were some inconsistencies in the object code there. Um, and the district lacks some formal dashboards, again, border-proof guardrails when it, when it came to this, uh, account, this accounting activity. And without the proper dashboards and proper documentation, again, the board should always make decisions when budget is not, um, operating within the plan that it was approved to operate in. So, my conference, my comprehensive summary of the findings are, Riverside maintains, uh, compliance and strong reserves but faces structural and operational and transparency challenges. Um, critical areas require, required attention, including your, uh, PI funds and transportation and some instructional, uh, areas. Organizational capacity and segregations of duties were at risk, and we'll talk about that in the next section. Um, again, the alignment of coding was off. Uh, there needs to have increased oversight over the check registry. Uh, budget development and methodology in a variance reporting will be critical. Uh, long-term solvency pressures as expenditures are beginning to out, outpace revenues in the general fund, and these observations will be disclosed in sections two through ten in my report. Okay, section two. Analysis of your business service organization, so your business office. Always like to start here. Now, this is typically a wish list item. Um, again, I've worked in the capacity of CFO. Uh, typically, school districts run lean on, uh, organization because the goal of the school district is to move outcomes in the classroom, educate children, make sure we have teachers. So general administration is typically, uh, very lean, and the business office is usually one of the leanest areas in the school district, and I'm sure Steve would agree with me on that because that, that's typical in the school district. Um, but what I noticed is that you have clear financial stewardship and oversight because you're treasurer, you have a treasurer and assistant treasurer, of course, your treasurer rolls up to your superintendent. Again, I believe goal, uh, I believe budgets should be, uh, goal-driven outcomes that are based off of student achievement, and having that relationship between your treasurer and your superintendent is, uh, very important. Uh, there are dedicated roles to payroll and accounting. Of course, this enhances, uh, your compliance and ability to meet your, uh, regulatory standards, and you have operational directors that specialize in their expertise. We're talking your child nutrition directors and directors like transportation. These are, uh, huge operating cost centers, and again, having that, uh, ex, uh, directors, I call them executive-level management, is critical. However, the weakness of this organizational structure is the over, uh, reliance of your treasurer and your assistant treasurer. Um, I didn't see, uh, any like, I didn't see any budget analysts or grant managers in the, uh, hierarchy, and I didn't see any positions that were dedicated to strategy. Uh, typically, your treasurer is going to be split between your day-to-day operations and your strategic functions. But typically, the day-to-day operations will monopolize strategic functions if the business office isn't staffed accordingly. So that, of course, is going to limit the way you budget, you reconcile, and you plan. And since the, those big cost centers like transportation and child nutrition don't report or they don't have a liaison that's reporting or that's supporting those, uh, those cost centers, it will limit the ability for those areas to communicate and plan accordingly. So key obs, key observations and recommendations. The current structure ensures compliance but lacks strategic capacity. Recommendations include adding mid-level roles such as a budget manager or a grant compliance officer. Of course, we want to encourage integration between finance and operational departments to strengthen strategic planning. Section three, evaluation of revenue streams. Well, so what this slide does, this, this is going to break down your general fund revenue streams over, uh, the five years that's on the screen. And I just want to point out to the total, the total revenue column all the way to the right. As we can see, there is positive growth there, which is great and outstanding. And, uh, we see state aid, which is kind of, uh, flat. State aid, as we know, is typically a supplement to your local property tax. Uh, like many school districts all across the country, uh, the local property tax is the revenue stream that makes up the majority of your revenue. And again, other revenue streams are typically small. So again, state aid is a complement, not a driver. Um, as we know, um, we are all operating as school district business professionals in the, uh, post-COVID era, so many school districts have, um, experienced what we call the ESRA cliff, meaning that ESRA funds have been expensed to the fullest, so they're all gone. And what we have to make sure and analyze and be careful there is that we are, um, when ESRA funds disappear, the expense drivers will need to disappear with those funds, or in the event that we want to keep, uh, post-ESRA services, we have to have clear planning to make sure that those services are absor, absorbed by the general fund. Um, other revenues and market sensitivity, as, as you saw on the slide, other revenue streams are extremely small and volatile, and runtime revenue streams should be identified, always disclosed, and planned accordingly, and long-term or multi-year decisions should never be made on one-time revenues or revenues with expiration dates. Sustainability and risk assessment. Okay, so, structural sustainability of revenue streams. The district benefits from a strong property tax base, providing consistent and stable revenue sources. Property taxes constitute a significant portion of the overall revenue, reducing dependency on more volatile sources. Again, you have very strong, uh, local revenue, so you could, you could supplement or you can get away with absorbing costs as one-time revenues expire. Growth constraints and future challenges. State aid has remained relatively flat over the years, limiting growth and potential, and potential from this source. Federal revenue, while helpful, is subject to the ESRA cliff, uh, meaning that upcoming reductions could create a revenue gap. Uh, sensitivity to market conditions, other local revenue sources such as investment income are influenced by market conditions and, of course, will be very, uh, will vary depending on those revenue sources. Uh, proactive financial strategies, emphasizing the need for strategic adjustments to address the reduction of federal funding. Um, exploring alternative revenue streams and building stronger local support to maintain fiscal health. So here are some strategic questions for competitiveness that, uh, I would definitely recommend as a best practice for our, our district leaders. Benchmarking against peer districts. How does district's revenue per pupil compare with similar districts? So how does your revenue per pupil here compare with your, with your neighboring districts? Identify areas of shrink and opportunity for improvement by looking at peer performance. Local tax effort and community support. Evaluating the current local tax rates and, uh, making sure it's comparable to your neighboring districts. Sustainability of revenue growth. Assessing the potential for growth in local revenues such as property tax increase or increases, sorry, or new funding sources. Identify opportunities for strategic revenue expansions and diversification. Impact on policy changes. Analyze how state and federal policies could shift impact to revenue streams, preparing, and prepare for potential changes and developing flexible financial strategies. So, as we know, or as many of you have heard, enrollment and revenue are parallel, and enrollment, and the relationship between enrollment and, and, uh, revenue is extremely critical. While, uh, the district experienced growth from growing from fifty-five point two million to sixty-two point three million at the end of twenty-twenty-four, enrollment did decline from four, four thousand to, uh, thirty-nine hundred in twenty-twenty-two. Then it stabilized near, uh, three thousand nine hundred and forty students in financial year twenty-twenty-four. However, once we saw the revenue drop, what I did notice is that your per-student spending did increase from fourteen thousand twenty-five dollars to fifteen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars in, uh, financial year twenty-fourth. So again, that's one of those situations that school district professionals should monitor. Is it a true, um, cost driver that students are costing more to educate? Or is it something that, as a district, we need to do something different to make sure that we are adjusting the cost as we see enrollment drop and revenue shifts in, in our, uh, in our financial environment? Key observations and revenue enrollment in context. Again, shrinks. Stable property tax base ensures consistent revenue. Weakness, decline in enrollment could cre, could create concerns in staffing and facilities if it remains unchanged. And again, uh, declining revenue, uh, work all over the country, declining revenue is a US problem. It's not a Riverside School District problem. This is happening all over the country. Of course, the risk, the expiration of ESRA, which again, this is affecting many school districts, highlights, um, it just highlights the vulnerability of those one-time revenues. And of course, the opportunity, a higher per-pupil funding offers a chance to strateg, to strategically target resources towards student achievement. Meaning, if we're spending more money, student outcomes should follow, uh, should follow the trend of spending more money. Recommendations for revenue and enrollment strategies. Align staffing and programs with enrollment. Adjust district operations to match current projected student counts. Regularly review, uh, class sizes, building utilization and programs offering for efficiency. Monitor per-pupil revenue. Track the, track the revenue per student as a key, as a key indicator to make sure that we are making equitable decisions when it comes to your students. Use this matrix in routine of board oversight and financial reporting. So this is another section that I would recommend that is included in your monthly financial reports. Scenario planning. Build multi-year projections that incorporate enrollment changes and their effects on state aid. Test what-if scenarios. What if enrollment declines? What if the state remains flat? What, what informed decisions can you make with the information that you have? And I always recommend that these scenarios are also presented with your, uh, monthly board reports or at least quarterly. And transparent communication clearly demonstrate the link between revenues and enrollment and student outcomes and community reporting. Use these connections in levy campaigns to explain the need to build and sustain public trust. Section four, solvency and fund balance analysis. Now, as you can see, again, your, your fund balance, I want to, I want to point to the column that says unencumbered for all of those who can see that. Do apologize, it may be small. But, um, you, fund balance is declining, and this is your general fund number. And I want to disclose this. You're going to see a situation where I'm going to, I'm presenting information that is showing a decline, a decline in fund balance, but you're going to see later that I'm going to show underspending. Remember, there are multiple lenses that I'm examining your financial, uh, state and your position under. This is just a general fund, like I started off. Remember, your, your, your school district budget and allocations are, are a combination of many funds. This is just isolating your general fund. However, uh, the district remains extremely solvent, being at a hundred and twenty-five days. So that is a, that is a very decent and a very good fund balance for a district of this size. So my conclusion on fund balances is my key message. Riverside remains financially stable and above key benchmarks, but its cash cushion is eroding due to the, uh, conservative deficit budgets, which I will cover later in the, uh, presentation. To safeguard solvency, the district must implement spending discipline and target ef, uh, effective and efficient initiatives. Closely monitor healthcare and personal costs, which are definitely, uh, costs that are driving up costs in many school districts. As we know, typically, a school district is sixty to eighty-five percent people, and, uh, salaries, benefits are a big part of your budget. Um, align future budgets with realistic and, and a sustainable growth revenue. Bottom line, without intervention, the district can, can risk reducing a healthy fund balance and reducing their thresholds. It can limit its flexibility to support poor educational priorities and respond, and respond to future shocks. All right, section five, overview of the budget management process. Uh, I apologize for that little bitty, um, image on the screen. However, it is just there for cosmetic use. It is, it is just a picture, but it is a picture of the appropriations, uh, report that is turned into the board. So I do apologize for the, uh, size of that. But what we're going to talk about here, so Riverside Local School maintains a legally compliant and structurally sound budgeting process. Temporary appropriations are adopted in June. Permanent appropriations follow later in the fiscal year. This cycle allows adjustments based on updated state allocations, uh, federal grant awards, property tax collections. Processes emphasize, uh, fiscal discipline, but reporting is ori, is oriented on, um, moving forward towards statutory compliance rather than proactively understanding the government's and community understanding. So here are the strengths of the current budget process. Comprehensive coverage. Appropriations consistently included all major funds. Uh, general fund, bond retirement, PI, uh, food service, federal and state grants. Um, there is a very, uh, there's conservative, there's a conservative nature in the expenditure control. In financial year twenty-two and twenty-three, the general funds expenditures remain below appropriation levels, reflecting prudency and cost containment. Uh, responsiveness to change. Meet your adjustments, show that the district can respond to evolving financial conditions. So here are some gaps in the budget monitoring reporting. Uh, monthly board reports provide a detailed financial data, but it did not, uh, have an optimized tool that I was able to identify the decision-making support. Um, my key limitations, the key limitations are there are limited narrative explanations of significant variance. It was unclear if underspending is a saving tactic, a delay from vacancies, or if it's just some variances that were failed to be reported to the district. A minimum use, uh, uh, it was minimal uses of visuals to highlight trends in fund balance, daily cash on hand, and program level balances. There is a lack of performance indicator linking spending to instructional priorities and student outcomes, and limited use of forward-looking indicators such as uh, projected use of fund balance starting in twenty twenty-four. My recommendations are quarterly narrative variance analysis. So what that means is that in your board reports, there'll be narratives describing any variance. And the board can have the opportunity, or the administration can have the opportunity to set targets. For example, if we're evaluating just, let's say, curriculum, the curriculum function, we can set a variance, we can set a variance target there. If it's under or overspent ten percent, there's some type of written justification that should be provided in that particular board packet. Uh, federal grant and program dashboard to track all federal grants. I think those should always be in everyone's face because those particular funds have an expiration date. So it's crucial and critical to understand where we are, how we're spending those funds. And grant funds and state funds have a specific usage as they are allocated for a specific, uh, source. So they have a restriction as general funds are not restricted. And of course, community face summaries. One pager's plain language of overviews and charts showing revenues, expenditures, and fund balance, uh, fund balance challenge, uh, changes. And it will, of course, strengthen transparency and public understanding. Part two is recommendation. Integration of performance indicators. Incorporate, uh, metrics such as per pupil, expenditures, staffing ratios, costs of transporting students, so the transportation formulas, uh, other, uh, effective inefficiency measures that are unique to your district. Link dollars to service levels and educational outcomes. Have a formal mid-year reallocation review. Conduct a structured review ideally in January. Uh, reassess appropriations based off of enrollment, revenue, and expenditure trends. Present recommendations and budget adjustments to the board to give the board the ultimate autonomy and opportunity to make adjustments as needed. Recommendations on the monthly report. This is just a structure of monthly reports that I've done in the past. Typically will include an executive summary. Again, I talk about those different lenses. We're gonna have a summary by fund. Uh, again, these are gonna break out the fund. Remember, the fund is where the money legally resides. Uh, view, uh, we're gonna view the lens or have a view by function. Remember, the function is the purpose. It's, it's the purpose of the expenditure or revenue. Uh, we're talking about instruction, administration, transportation, operation, and maintenance, support services, um, expenditure by object that identifies exactly what was purchased. Was it a payroll cost? Was it a contracted service? Was it a supply? A revenue detail. Again, local, state, federal sources, grant allocations, payments in lieu of taxes. A variance analysis, again, that's, that's typically identified as an exceptions report. Charts and visuals that are, um, that are very, that are legible to the non-finance professional so they can see whether, uh, so taxpayers and administrators can see where the funds at, at all times, looking at the, uh, looking at the information through a novice lens. And of course, recommendations and next steps. I always like to, when I mentor CFOs, um, we always talk about bringing recommendations to the board and to your high-level administration. Although the CFO and the treasurers, we don't typically make the decision, we should have recommendations ready to guide those board members and our administrators. Next, implementation, guidance, and report improvements frequency. Monthly reporting typically is gonna run from August through May. And your comprehensive year-end summary in June will probably be presented along with your audit, um, the audience versions. Of course, there's, there's, there's different expertise that are looking at these reports. Of course, a cabinet and internal leadership, uh, version, as well as a board and public, uh, version, as I kinda just described. And formats include, include in board packets as a PDF post on transparency webpage, uh, as it allows, as the capacity allows, and the interactive dashboard for drawdown or drill-down analysis. Kinda like how the Ohio checkbook page works. You can kinda drill down and have multi-year, uh, views on demand of your, uh, of your financial information. Conclusion, uh, budgeting as a strategic tool. Riverside's budgets and reports are compliant, but remain too compliant focused. Um, what, what do I mean by that? By, by inserting narratives, visuals, and outcomes and base indicators, the district can provide the board with actionable insights rather than raw data. We can reduce, uh, financial risks through early identifications and trends and variance. We have to think of it like this. If it's May and we see we have a variance in any one of our functions, it's a little too late to make that adjustment. So having a more strategic, um, structure to your reports will give the board and administration opportunity to make those adjustments accordingly. And of course, it strengthens public trust. It, it shows how the funds are allocated or managed in real time instead of waiting till the end of the year. So bottom line, transforming budgeting reporting from a statutory requirement into a strategic management tool will improve decision-making and better align resources with student outcomes. Section, section six, general ledger analysis summary. All right, section, section six, tongue twister. This compliance review examines your general ledger, uh, data from, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. The primary objective is to evaluate the integrity of budget allocations, identify fiscal irregularities, irregularities, uh, and assess the internal controls and your financial management standards. And of course, we wanna, we wanna focus, we wanna focus on extreme transparency, or what I call absolute transparency, and make sure that our general ledger has what I like to, uh, coin this term as good ledger hygiene. And I'll describe what that looks like shortly. So, uh, in examining the general ledger report, here's some things that I, um, I observed. And these are more serious in nature, as I would, I would like to state that. These are more serious in nature, and I'll tell you why. So dormant accounts. Dormant accounts are account codes that have budget but no transactions. Meaning that when we look at the budget column, or if you look in your system, you'll see budget there, no transactions. And when you get to the end of the year, uh, the money hasn't been transferred or reconciled. Um, we had a total of six thousand nine hundred and thirty accounts over those periods with a total of fifty-five million dollars in budget. Uh, again, and no transactions. Over-budgeted accounts. We have fifteen thousand eighty-six accounts that were over-budgeted. Uh, the total budget was twenty-seven million, but we spent a hundred and thirty-two point nine million out these accounts. Again, this is not criminal, this is not fraud. This happens regularly in school districts. However, it should not happen without the proper explanations and justification. Because what we understand, when the board adopts a budget, the board typically is the budget manager. So when appropriations change and allocations change, the board should either be notified or should grant the permission for those accounts to go over budget, and budgets should be adjusted by way of budget amendments. Uh, and of course, transactions with no budget. We had eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-five, uh, transactions where we had no budget, but we had transactions. Again, this, this can happen as we create account codes throughout the year. Uh, your treasurers and CFO may identify a unique need that was not planned for at the beginning of the year. However, uh, I think best practice is to disclose that and to make sure that the board and the public understands that, hey, we need to create a new account code and move budget over here, and we need to make those accounting, uh, those accounting adjustments. Now, while this is critical, um, this type of accounting activity throws off monthly reporting. Um, it's difficult to have an accurate variance report if your accounts aren't reconciled. So i- in my professional opinion, when we look back at June and we have this many accounts that haven't been reconciled, I think it can be problematic and definitely should be monitored and addressed. And again, um, I kinda touched on this slide, but again, it should, we should always be able to justify unused lines because they could serve as an informal contingency or appear to be an informal contingency. Um, enforce budgetary controls. Uh, have situations where you can have hard stops. I don't, uh, one thing I did not examine is the software system. I don't know the safeguards there. The safeguards can be set on the system to trigger a notification or stop spending accordingly. Or simply, when this activity happens, it should be disclosed and reconciled immediately. Shredding controls. Again, create that exceptions report. Um, have some type of goal to fix dormant accounts. Again, this is normal accounting. It happens. But at that frequency, I think that frequency is a little higher than it should be. Um, ne- negative, uh, uncommitted balances should be reconciled and cleaned. Uh, transactions posted without budget should definitely, uh, be included in this, uh, exceptions report. Um, we need to shorten the audit trail. Require documented justification and approval routing for all expenditures. Process outside of the budget adoption. Meaning, the only way you can get a dormant account, a over, uh, a budget with no transaction or over-budgeted account, these are accounts that are moving outside of the scope of which the budget was adopted. Because when the budget is set, it's set in each account code that is turned over to your board when the board raises their right hand to adopt those budgets. And maintain documentation for internal and external audit review um, that can be submitted to your auditors. And having this type of, having a high level of accounting hygiene definitely makes your audit go a lot smoother. Conclusion here. The multi-year review confirms that Riverside maintains a robust ledger documentation and has received clean external audit opinions. However, consistent anomalies, dormant accounts, budget overruns, and under-budget expenditures indicate the need for stronger internal controls and more proactive monitoring of the budget execution. Bottom line is implementing a monthly budget exceptions report will tighten budgetary enforcement, will enhance accountability, it will safeguard, it will create safeguards against compliance risk, and it will help ensure that resources are used as intended to support student learnings and discipline. And I emphasize used as intended because the account code tells the story. The account code tells you exactly where those funds are supposed to go and what they were meant for. So again, having these, this type of report that's added in your monthly report will only increase the intended use of those funds. Section seven. Here we go, account code misalignments and compliance with Ohio law. We're gonna get into the PI funds and transportation coding risk indicators. So, uh, there were three tests that were conducted. Uh, the PI funds were tested, uh, the instructional codes were tested, transportation were, was tested. And, uh, there was some inconsistencies in how these three areas were coded based off of your USA manual, which is your financial, uh, accountability guide. This has all of the list of codes and the descriptions, and it gives scenarios on how codes, uh, should, should use. Now, all, all dollar amounts represented, uh, testing populations, and it did not confirm misstatements. Meaning that the dollars were spent and things were received. So again, there's no criminal activity, no fraud. Just simply inconsistent coding and some things that were not coded according to, uh, your US, your USAS manual, uh, Ohio law. Okay, so structural limitation, coding tests, and structural limitations. Uh, the general ledgers, the general ledger, check register, and monthly board reports did not fully reconcile. Analytic tests, uh, swept in these areas. Revenue postings, uh, transfers and journal entries. And there was, um, there were some coding patterns that just didn't match. Like, for example, we will code a set of employees in transportation and use a certain series of codes. And then we would have the same type of employee use a different series of codes. And both could be right, but typically, um, there is an outline in your financial, your financial manual, that's an internal document or board policy could set how things should be coded and presented. Or your state auditor may have some preferences on how certain things need to be, uh, coded. The final conclusion required an invoice-level test and supporting documents to review. So the, uh, PI test at this level came back inconclusive due to, um, one, the, the way the reports were originally pooled. I, I didn't have the knowledge that the PI funds were two different funds. That's number one. And the check, uh, the check register, we had to manually construct it, meaning that we had all of the data, but I had to work with the business office to include the account codes manually. So it did not reconcile, the check register and the general ledger did not reconcile, which we did do, uh, uh, independent review of the PI funds, which I, which I will cover last in the presentation. So, so again, uh, the PI funds, the problem, the first problem that I saw that it was a lot of expenditures that did not meet the criteria. Uh, there are more operational expenditures. They didn't meet the, uh, capital spending that typically, uh, has a five-year lifespan and beyond. Um, there were many, um, transactions that did not contain the six-hundred series object code, which is used to identify capital spending. Um, and same went for, uh, your transportation as well. And then there was a big discrepancy on the first review of the check register, and there were some general ledger discrepancies. So instruction, I wanna, I'm gonna talk about instruction and get away from PI funds. I wanna go to instruction first. So an instructional function carry, carry operational and purchase service account codes. So there were about, there were about, uh, let's see, five hundred and ten, five point seven million dollars worth of instructional codes that had an object of five-ten, and this was a general purchase of service. Uh, my interpretation that this typically doesn't align with an instructional function. So I flagged those for your district administration review. Uh, there were some five-twenty insurance-related costs, and there were some five-twenty-six, uh, data processing and technology service. There's a function for technology service. So these particular codes didn't align. So there, I flagged about six point eight million dollars worth of, uh, transactions for your administration's review on the, uh, coding of those particular, uh, of, of those particular, um, operations and funds. Next, transportation. I flagged about twenty-five point six million dollars in transportation expenditures. Again, most of these were- Again, most of these were in the personnel category. Meaning that they had benefits codes for certified and non-certified employees. And without requesting, and that's typically, we typically try to stay away from the employee staffing models because it's personal information involved. And what we do is a high-level view of your finances. But these could be and probably are transportation expenses, but these are flagged so that your administration can review these past transactions and develop a strategy to code these expenditures going forward if it hasn't already been done. Transportation miscoding. So again, I kind of just touched on this slide. There are likely transportation staff benefits that just did not meet the coding alignment that is laid out in your financial accountability guide. There were some purchase service codes that were used in the 400 series that did not meet the alignment of the transportation function. And there were some capital expenditures paid out of transportation that I flagged and questioned, should that have been a PI expenditure? Again, so the key questions. Do these costs truly and solely support transportation spending? Should this be, or should it be recorded in operation maintenance administration or capital projects? So they're flagged and was submitted over for your administration to review. Conclusion. The analysis identified coding patterns and risk groupings not proven to be truly misstated. However, the PI analytic tests did not, the tools that I was sent initially did not reconcile. So the test was originally inconclusive. However, the goal here is to move to a standard of coding in this area that suffices Ohio law and that will easily allow anyone that's using this information to quickly identify those expenditures. Now, on the PI side, again, there were some descriptions that did not meet the criteria of the PI fund levy usage that we will disclose later in this presentation. Section eight. The check register dispersment review. Okay, so we reviewed the check register from years 2019 to 2024. The purpose, we wanted to test the integrity and identify anomalies that may indicate fraud or irregular activity that may input and require errors. And we wanted to make sure that there were no weakness in internal control and documentation. Results were fed into the Briscoe Consulting Group purchasing risk model in a vendor heat map, which was turned over to the district in, I believe, Exhibit 16. And what that heat map does, it identifies high-value purchases. It identifies purchases that may not have a description or purchases that did not have quantity. And each, the top twenty vendors, we give them a score. And it is handed over to the district for internal auditing and monitoring usage. Again, here are some key anomalies. With the check register, had about nine hundred and thirty-nine payments with a unit price greater than ten thousand dollars. Again, this is normal activity. But what I like to do is make sure that we note those transactions. That way, your internal audit service, which is your business office, can review that activity accordingly and make sure that things are properly documented. And of course, test those transactions as they see fit. However, there were zero quantity entries. This could vary from district to district. However, typically, best practice is to assign quantities when you're cutting checks. Even if it's a service, it's usually a one will go in that particular slot in your system when you're identifying the quantities that are being purchased in order once you issue that PO. But we had about fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-five there. Zero negative unit price. We had about two thousand four hundred and thirty-four entries there. Now, some could be credits and adjustments, but that should be documented in that particular report. And missing descriptions, there are about twenty payments with no descriptions. Again, this definitely defeats the purpose of the report if we cannot look at a description and identify what that particular purchase is. And what that does is creates more time for the business office personnel to go investigate and research what that purchase is. And again, what the risk model shows, it shows the high-value checks. It shows duplicate and near-duplicate payments. So anytime I see duplicate payments that are on the same PO, or if I see duplicate payments that are monthly that exceed the frequency of utilities or reoccurring payments, I flag those for review to make sure that those are true expenditures that should be paid. Just short story, in my experience, I've investigated and worked with a district that had a contract for a technology, a software, technology software. And they had two contracts, but they only needed one contract for the service, but they were paying them on a double contract. And the second contract was useless, and that district ended up wasting one point five million dollars over six years. So again, I like to flag those duplicate transactions for internal auditing purpose. And of course, I produced that executive-level heat map, which is in the drive that you can examine to test those vendors accordingly. Of course, recommendations. Department-level audits. Again, I always advise administration to find time to test their purchasing. Purchasing is extremely important because purchasing is one of the absolutes in finance, right? In finance, you can fix things. If you mess up an account or if you have a dormant account, you can journal entry to fix it. But when you purchase things, you've done one or two things. You've either done something correct or you've done it wrong. So purchasing, you're either letting compliance in or fraud out. So you want to make sure that you're purchasing, your POs and your purchasing standards are tested regularly. And this tool will definitely give your business office the roadmap to do that. And again, to make sure that it's ongoing, at least test anomalies on a quarterly basis and have some type of reporting that's in your quarterly report that's turned over to your board to guarantee that purchases are made efficiently and accurately. Section nine. Budget versus actual expenditures. Okay, so what we did here, we compared adopted appropriations to actual expenditures in the general ledger. Objective was to test the budget integrity and appropriation controls. Big picture, fund-level compliance is maintained, but there are patterns of early overspending and later structural underspending that did raise a concern. So here, we want to plan transparency and want to have alignment between appropriations and real spending needs. So here, this is a high-level look of the compilation of all funds. And it's what's budgeted versus what's actual. As we can see in 2020, overspent by twelve point three million all the way down to 2024 where we started to see trends of underspending. Again, this is neither wrong nor right, but it should be planned, it should be disclosed, and it should be detailed in your reporting on instances of this type of activity. So key concerns. Overspending shift to structural overbudgeting. FY twenty and twenty-one, actual expenditures exceeded appropriations. Signals appropriations control risks and potential statutory noncompliance, if not backed by timely amendments. So again, there are usually, there are twelve times districts get an opportunity to amend those budgets. Again, underspending and overspending could be a tactic, but it should be disclosed and addressed accordingly. Sorry about that yellow, it's very bright. But FY, that's FY 2022 through 2024. Trend reserves, budgets consistently were higher than actuals, indicates structural overbudgeting rather than a tight plan. Implications, it's safer from a legal compliance standpoint, but it erodes transparency by overstating expected spending and can mask the available capability that could be used to redirect priorities such as instruction. So here's a deeper dive into 2023, which I want to recognize as an anomaly when it came through to the functional spending. But I definitely want to point out instruction was underspent by four point three million. Again, this type of activity is not, it doesn't violate compliance nor is it criminal. However, I do believe that it should be disclosed, and this should not be a surprise when you're presenting this information at the end of the year. This should definitely be captured by your annual audit functional spending. But again, it's extremely important to understand where you are in instruction. Because this is the opportunity that districts have to make adjustments in that category, to student outcomes, to teacher development, classroom supplies. I mean, there are many things that the instructional budget can do that will touch and help students achieve greatness, right? Again, support services. Again, it was underspent, school administration was overspent. That's one of the areas where we, school districts typically get scrutinized. So it's always a good idea to keep your eye on that particular function. Operation and maintenance, underspent that year, transportation underspent. And all other, the combination of smaller functions were all underspent. Being in that year, the budget was underspent by six point two million. Again, which could have been a strategy, but I didn't see any documentation in the audit, nor I didn't see. I did look through some of the board reports. I didn't see any documentation that that was a strategy. So I do want to definitely point that out and highlight and say, definitely issue a recommendation that that type of activity should be noted and passed off in your monthly reports. We shouldn't wait till the end of the year to disclose this type of information. Strategic implications and recommendations. Legal safeguard, tighten appropriation control and the amendment process to avoid overspending beyond adopted limits. Budget recalibration, review chronically underspent functions and adjust appropriations downward to the alignment, I'm sorry, to the line with realistic execution. Prioritize instruction. Instruction is the most important thing that any school district does. It should be watched. And there should be constant reinvestments in classrooms, student support and learning recovery, and variance transparency. Implement a quarterly board-level variance report with narrative explanations for major over and underspending. Link variances discussions to strategic priorities rather than treating them as technical accounting issues. Section 10. Conclusions and strategic recommendations. From the Riverside Financial Foundation. Again, strong property tax base, historically a healthy fund balance, which is awesome. Consistently clean audit opinions that adhere to state appropriation law, which is extremely important. However, I do want to highlight the importance of understanding how your money works. So audit checks for compliance, your financial statements to make sure the money there. What we're investigating is how your money works. Did the money go where it was supposed to? And how transparent is the district when it comes to disclosing and illustrating financial health? Next, conservative financial posture demonstrates a commitment to compliance and fiduciary responsibility, which it does. However, the independent review identifies systemic issues that require timely and suitable attention. Persistent underspending and transparency risks. Material underspend in dormant accounts. Again, just to retouch on account coding. Account coding is adopted along with the budget. And when accounts, when transactions move outside of the adopted budget, they need to be disclosed, justified, and reconciled immediately. Again, if it doesn't, it reduces transparency for the board and community, and it ultimately would obstruct the decisions that the school board can make. General ledger check and check registry risk factors. Expenditures appearing in accounts without clear or sufficient budget authority. Meaning, if you're overspending or if you're spending out of account with no budget, you didn't have the authority in the first place to use that account. So again, that should be disclosed, and the board should be included in that type of activity. I'm going to skip the PI funds because we're going to dive into those next. Transactional level anomalies in your check registers. Zero quantity entries, negative or zero unit prices, and incomplete descriptions. All need attention and need to be monitored going forward. These issues weaken the audit trail and raise questions about internal control, design, and execution. Strategic recommendations. Five priority areas. General ledger, exception reporting and cleanup. Monthly board monitoring and public transparency. Purchasing dispersment review. Budget development reform. And organizational capacity and role clarification. Shrinking controls and budget practices. Again, develop a GL exceptions reporting cleanup and increase the shrink of your monthly board reporting and transparency. At least start it off with a one-to-two-page executive summary that kind of details your financial health and activity. And disclose this information in the board meeting, which is done. I did do some research on my own, and I watched the November board meeting. Steve did a heck of a job illustrating your financial position. And those are the type of recommendations that I recommend for all school districts. Procurement integrity and organizational capacity. Purchasing and dispersment review. Align process with board policy and state procurement requirements. Tie high-dollar and high-risk payments directly to contracts, POs, and board actions. Meaning that all of the support documents should always be linked to those purchase orders. Resolve zero quantity and negative price entries. Shrinked data entry validations, because this happens on the data entry side. Budget development and reform. Move towards a performance-informed budget that links dollars to programs and outcomes. Adopt formal contingencies in a reserve policy, which boards and administration can do that. Meaning, if we do bill contingencies, for example, I've used dormant accounts to bill my contingencies. However, I disclose those contingencies to my administration and my board. And when those contingencies move or don't move, I definitely have a reconciliation report that I will submit with my board packets. Again, organizational capacity. Create wishless items, but create mid-level roles. Budget manager, compliance manager. Design a fiscal system, data analysis for coding and integrity. And dashboards provide cross-training and professional development on coding, procurement, grants, and control. From a compliance to strategic financial leadership, in final opinion. Riverside has a solid compliance foundation and a strong balance sheet. Current budgeting and reporting practices, however, do not meet the expectations for transparency and strategic agility. Recurrent underspending and misalignment, again, dormant accounts, act as informal contingencies, limiting the board's ability to see available resources, debate trade-offs, and direct dollars to where they should go. Implementing the recommendation reforms will align financial planning. With execution will support more intentional and equitable deployment of resources and move Riverside from a conservative compliance towards a strategic-driven model of financial leadership that threatens both public trust and student outcomes. Okay, we're going to dive into the PI funds. Okay, so a comprehensive transactional review of the PI funds were conducted from financial year 2019 to 2024. This focused on the PI funds and fund number 003. Uh, this focused on the PI funds and fund number zero zero three and zero three three. Again, the timeframe I just stated. Uh, purpose to assess compliance with the ORC five seven zero five, which is, uh, your, again, your financial manual that, that, uh, displays and that, uh, describes coding, your coding integrity and stewardship of restricted capital resources. So again, uh, permanent improvement funds are restricted funds that are, uh, allocated for the purpose of those capital assets. Bill, and this bills on phase one's findings regarding budget integrity and coding misalignment. All right, the PI funds legal framework. PI dollars are statutorily restricted under the ORC five seven zero five. Allowable uses, capital improvements and long-term assets with a greater than five-year useful life. Not allowable, uh, routine repairs and maintenance. Uh, short-lived technology and software consulting, administrative services, freight or operational expenditures. All PI expenditures should use a capital object code series six twenty to six sixty, which is, uh, assigned to identify those expenditures and should be linked to an identified capital project. So, um, typically there's an extra step that in the PI purchase, that purchase order should be accompanied with some type of support that links that purchase to, um, to, um, that project. And again, that's not law, that's not law, that's not a statutorily required. But I will say that's definitely a best practice recommendation. PI revenue and expenditures, here's the summary. So, uh, PI funds revenue from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four was fourteen million. However, expenditures exceeded twenty-five point one million, which all the expenditures has been itemized and handed over to the district administration. Uh, expenditures exceeded PI revenue by eleven point zero six million. Um, there was a, um, reclassification that I was made aware that made, uh, the purchase of grouping of Chromebooks, uh, made that an allowable expense. And what I understand about that is that you can't purchase an individual laptop, but you can purchase a group of them together and capitalize them. So, uh, the original finding of misalignment was five point one million, but after the removal of those laptops, the misalignment of PI expenditures was four point six two million. Non-capital, uh, and he- here's how the, the breakdown and how things were identified. So, uh, non-capital objects routing charged to PIs include, uh, codes five ten, supplies and, uh, minor equipment. We had, uh, expenditures textbooks and instructional material. We had some expenditures coded to five seventy-three, non-capital furniture and, and, and fixtures. We, we had, uh, four twenty-three, four nineteen, six ten, repairs and maintenance. We had some eight hun- eight hundred series codes, eight hundred nineteen slash eight, uh, twenty-nine. Short-lived technology principal and interest. And we, uh, identified expenditures that were coded under eight forty-five and eight forty-nine administrative fees. Again, this demonstrates weak coding governance and a lack of PI, a PI specified review process. Um, he- here's a view of the groupings. Uh, I did my, I definitely, uh, did my best to group these funds together so we can break down that four point six million. Um, there was an other unclassified, uh, which I'll break that other unclassified down more to a macro level, but, uh, there were two point three million dollars of other unclassified. Uh, signage and branding. We spent, uh, four point one, I'm sorry, one point four million, uh, out of the PI funds. There, that was coded to PI funds. Classroom furniture, uh, three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents. Repairs and maintenance, we spent, uh, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Administrative fees, uh, which included, uh, like some audit fees, tax accessories. Uh, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred, twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Shipping and handling costs that could not be, uh, linked to any capital projects. Twenty-seven thousand, four hundred, thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. And textbook and instructional materials came in at nineteen thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Again, uh, removing the technology, the group of laptops that was, uh, purchased at four hundred and eighty thousand, twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. And the chart here is just a chart to give you a visual of the impact. Okay, here's a deep dive into the other unclassified. Um, had some transactions that could have been, uh, by description, potential capital was, but was unable to link to capital projects through account coding. They were coded as operational ex- expenditures. And the problem there is we have PI funds that are allowable that we coded correctly. So these were coded outside of what PI funds should be used for. Uh, some, some, uh, engineering and envir- environmental services. Uh, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, sixty-three transaction, uh, lease, lease purchasing finance. Uh, eighty-five thousand, there were nine transactions there. And again, I'm breaking down that other unclassified category, which is the bulk of the, uh, PI fund spending that's misaligned with the PI fund criteria. Operational and non-capital service, uh, eight hundred and thirty K, seventy-eight transaction. Uh, insufficient fund detail is at, uh, three hundred and thirty-two K. There was thirty-seven, um, transactions there. And again, the miscoding and documentation gaps. I'm, uh, noting that as a, it's a systemic problem. Uh, board approval, use of PI funds for student device. Again, I've, I've mentioned the laptops, these are allowable. Again, if they're bought in groups, they're allowable. Bought as individual, as an individual item, they're not. Um, restoring capital capacity. Uh, historic use of PI, PI funds for operational cost reduces capital capacity. Meaning that you can't do what these funds are meant to do. Uh, under the, uh, ORC, uh, five seven zero five point fourteen and five seven zero five point one six, will, does allow, uh, perspective transfer from general to PI. Uh, recommendations is to classify or to journal or to document, cause the, the books are closed on these, but to document these PI charges is operational. And to, uh, make an initiative to restore your capital funds by transferring four point six million dollars back to PI to be able to, uh, take on the capital projects. And from there, I suggest you develop a multi-year PI sus- uh, sustainability plan for future projects. Strengthen governments and the coding discipline. Establish a treasure layer review committee to vet all PI expenditures in pre-approval. Meaning to get pre-approval before these expenditures even happen. And I don't know if there are safeguards that are actually in the system that can prevent, uh, PI funds from even being spent if the coding is not aligned. So that, that would be a IT, uh, that, that would be a IT conversation or your, uh, system administrator question. But I have seen, uh, districts where that can happen to where you can set in the system to where a transaction won't even happen if the code is outside of what it's programmed to use in the live budget system. Uh, require full documentation package, packages for, you know, your architectural and engineering. Cause that, as we know, those are associated with, uh, capital projects. However, there are operational expenditures and expenses that happens with these types of vendors as well. So they need some type of checklist or documentation practice to identify which is which. Uh, implement a PI coding decision tree. Uh, again, and restrict the PI coding rights to train staff only. Meaning that P, identify someone as your PI, uh, fund expert and let them be the final approver or the enterer of those, uh, expenditures. And it, enforce exclusive use of six twenty to six sixty. Of course, this will give you that consistency that your district uses anyway for capital object code in the PI and block, uh, non-capital objects in funds zero zero three and zero three three. Require project numbers on all PI requisitions to enable project-based accounting. Capital project accounting oversight, uh, oversight and corrective action. Again, move to a project-based accounting, uh, with a dedicated cost centers for each capital projects. Maintain support documentation, POs, contracts, invoice justification for leasing for, uh, over ten years, a maximum of ten years and beyond. Uh, require a treasure, a treasurer level approval for all PI-coded purchases. Confirming the five, the greater than five-year useful life of the capital nature and project alignment. Treat misaligned PI expenditures as operational, then restore them through the PI, through, through the, uh, the, the, restore them through the general fund and through those, uh, transfers. Uh, implement a multi-year PI sustainability plan for capital project priorities. Uh, training accountability and professional opinion. Conduct quarterly PI trainings for staff involved with decoding, purchasing and capital project management. Issue an annual PI compliance report to the board summarizing its use, projects and corrective action. Again, the Bristow Consulting Group Professional Adjustments. PI usage reflects a material breakdown in control and stewardship of these restricted capital funds. The misalignment of the four point six two million over five years is systemic, not incidental. Immediate corrective action, it should be required, is required to restore compliance, protect capital, uh, integrity and rebuild public trust. With that, that, that is my presentation and I'll take any questions you may have.
I know, I'm gonna have to speak loud. I will try very hard. So if you can't hear me in the back, let me know. Um, because we did not have an opportunity to have any conversation with you prior to your engagement. Um, can I ask you a couple of questions about your background and experience? Um, sure, thank you. Um, are, are you a licensed CPA in the state of Texas or Ohio?
I started off, I'm not a CPA.
Okay, so do you have any certificate in internal audit or fraud examination?
I, I, uh, I have a certification through the Texas Association of School Business Officers. It's a, it's a Texas credential.
It's a Texas credential for school business officials. But I'm asking, do you have a certificate in internal audit or fraud examination?
I do not. I started off with that.
Um, do you, do you work in a school district?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I have some questions on how you have compiled your data. Um, it is my understanding that our staff provided you with some downloaded information from the USAS. Um, is that correct?
Yes, your staff, the data that I used came from the district. That is correct.
And so did you visit our district at any time during your engagement?
Physically, no.
Okay, so did you request any supporting documentation for any of the transactions?
Uh, yes.
Can you elaborate at all on what you looked at?
Um, the supporting documentation is when I had to request the PO ledger for the PI funds.
Okay, did you look at any invoices, purchase orders, physical documentation?
No, I looked at, I looked at the dashboard, which contained, uh, the purchase order number, date, transaction number, and had descriptions of the purchase.
So it was an Excel spreadsheet, basically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if you did, if you, if that's all you looked at and you did not look at any, um, pure documentation, how can you flag data for coding if you didn't real, um, sorry? How, how did you flag data for coding if you didn't look at any underlying documentation? And you're not gonna have a microphone for response, so we're gonna...
I'll speak loud. Um, simple, um, the coding is attributed with the transaction in the Excel spreadsheet, but the spreadsheet is a data dump out of your system because that's why I requested. So again, the code is associated with the transaction.
I, I understand that, but you're saying that, that some of the documentation didn't align? And I'm confused as to how that would happen if you, if you didn't look at the underlying documentation. How do you know, for example, if an engineering fee is for a regular purpose that's not outside, that's outside of the PI or if it's included in the PI? How would you know that?
From the account coding.
Just from the account coding?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to, to the account coding if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so according to the state of Ohio's Auditor's Office, account coding, um, for the object code doesn't necessarily mean that it's PI or not PI. Six hundreds are not the only things that are allowed in a PI fund. Um, there's many instances where there are other items that you can have coded that are not six hundred object codes. And I'm gonna give you an example, just as one, is the, um, county treasurer's tax collection fees, which would be coded as an eight hundred. And that has to be in the PI fund. That's citable by the Ohio State Auditor's Office. And if you don't include those kinds of things, you're gonna get cited on audit. So that's just an example of one item that's not a six hundred. I'm also gonna read some information in section, uh, Ohio Revised Code, section one three three point one five, which is more or less about borrowing, but it's got the best definition in Ohio state law about what a permanent improvement really is. So if you don't mind, without limitation as to other costs properly allocable to the permanent improvement, the costs of acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, rehabilitating, installing, remodeling, renovating, enlarging, equipping, furnishing or otherwise improving permanent improvements, site clearance, improvement of preparation, acquisition of real or personal property, all related direct administrative expenses and allocable portions of direct costs of the subdivision, engineering, architectural, legal and other consulting and professional services, designs, plans, specifications, feasibility or rate studies, appraisals, surveys and estimates of cost, interest or interest equivalents on any securities that have to do with permanent improvements, whether capitalized or not, financing costs, title work, title commitment, insurance and guarantees. And then it says some other things here that are not relevant. And for the payment of any, of, any item or items of cost of the permanent improvements and all other expenses necessary or incidental to planning or determining feasibility or practicality with respect to permanent improvements or necessary or is incidental to the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, installation, remodeling, renovating, enlargement, equipping, furnishing or other improvement of the permanent improvements. The financing of the permanent improvements and the placing of the permanent improvements in condition for use and operation and all like-a-related costs, including any one part or combination of subdivisions share those costs or expenses. So that's, that's the state's definition of permanent improvements. Like I said, it's very lengthy, but it goes into, um, to discuss that there are many things that are allowable in the permanent improvement fund that are not capitalizable and capital expenses are coded to six hundred as an object code. Um, I also want to go back and just make sure that the public understands that this district appropriates dollars at the fund level. If I am correct, we, we appropriate at the fund level. We do not appropriate at the budgetary expense account level. Um, and so hence the reason why we have a lot of accounts that don't have a budget associated with them. Because we're basically budgeting at, we're appropriating at the fund level and we basically budget at the object code level. So all the accounts that are underneath that, the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of accounts, we don't budget that. So if we have an account that says, hey, this is teachers' salaries for third grade at Buckeye, that's an account that we use, that we code people's expenses to, but we budget to salaries. So it's up here and all those other accounts are down here. I, I think it's misleading to the public to give them all this information and not explain that. Um, I just think it's misleading. I have some other things I would, I would like to ask. I, I, it's interesting that you want the board to get pictures of our expenses, but we do get monthly expenditure reports and we get lots of board reports on a monthly basis. We already do that. We already also have somebody who takes care of our federal grant programs. Um, they provide monthly reports and we don't get reimbursed after we spend the money. So every month, somebody has to go in and report that out to the federal government and that way we get our reimbursement. So we're already doing that. Again, I just think there's a lot of inconsistencies in... Again, I just think there's a lot of inconsistencies in here with what we actually do. We get a fund balance report every single month. Give me a moment. I would like to know how you tested, again, tested some of this data as it relates to, you say you audited, you tested it, or did you just sort it based on object codes? Again, I don't understand.
Well, sorting is level one for all the accountants in the room. Sorting is level one, but the testing is, oh, Mike, sorry.
All right, so I'll start over. So yes, sorting is, I mean, that's level one to organize your data, but testing is to evaluate the data using like your financial accountability guide to see how things are coded, and to test them against other financial mechanisms to see if things tie from your general ledger to your check register to your monthly reports to your audit. So that's the testing of the numbers in your financial mechanism.
You want more transparency, sorry. You want to have more, you want us to have more transparency to the general public, but you also want the board to get less reports. So that's conflicting.
That's inaccurate. I'd actually say the increase of reporting, but that's an inaction.
So I would like, for the past 10 years, this district has received a financial audit award from the state of Ohio for excellence in financial reporting. I would like to read part of what the standardized audit report says from the state of Ohio Auditor's Office, who actually does our audit every single year. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing because it's pretty lengthy, but I want to give some idea of what they do. They audit the business type activities of each major fund. They state in their audit reports, in their opinion, and this is the state of Ohio, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities of each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Riverside Local School District, just so that everybody is aware, the general fund and the PI fund are both major funds of this district, so they get extra scrutiny. They have conducted their audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, GAAS, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in governmental accounting standards, auditing standards, sorry, issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Their objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatements, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinions in performing an audit according to generally government auditing standards. They will identify and assess the risks of material misstatement of the financial statements, whether due to fraud or error, and design and perform audit procedures responsive to those risks. They will obtain an understanding of internal control relevant to the audit in order to design auditing procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances. They will evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness and significant accounting estimates made by management as well. One of the other things that they also do is they do look at our internal control, policies and procedures. They have at the end of the audit report a schedule of findings, and everything has a no. Were there any material weaknesses in internal control reported at the financial statement level? The answer is no. Were there any significant deficiencies in internal control reported at the financial statement level? The answer is no. Were there any reported material non-compliance issues at the financial statement level? The answer is no. Were there any material weaknesses in internal control reported for major federal programs? The answer is no. Were there any significant deficiencies in internal control reported for major federal programs? The answer is no. The answer is no. So for the past 10 years, so for the past 10 years, the answer has been no. The past 10 years that I'm aware of, at least the past 10 years that I've looked at, I haven't gone back and looked at previous, and I've been here a long time, and we've never had an unmodified or an unclean opinion in this district. I would like to assure the people of this community that this report that Mr. Briscoe is putting out, while, I don't know, it's data that you can pull from an Excel file provided by our accounting department that could be done by anyone and sorted by object code, I'm not exactly sure what you're telling us. I listened to the report, and at the end of the day, this is information that we've gotten from our treasurer every single month. Nothing new. I get it, these are not questions, this is just a statement from me. This is my profession. This is what I do for a living, and to misrepresent that to the public, what it is that my profession does, is, there are many words. And I'm not gonna say them right now, but it's disheartening. That's all I have. Anybody want this?
Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, wasn't a question.
Yeah, is the statement ended? Okay. Steve, do you have any questions?
Are you kidding? Really?
Okay, so if you're gonna interrupt the meeting, you're gonna have to leave, so please don't interrupt the meeting.
So I want to start off first by apologizing to the board, because it's not good practice of a treasurer or superintendent to present information that you haven't had an opportunity to share with the board. The challenge was, we received, we had 36 hours to put this together and review it. And I will say, without question, there is information on here that will be very beneficial for me, and very beneficial for our department. You can take any department, any organization, and you can make it better. So we will take everything from that report, and we're scouring through, but I just wanted to show you a few things, or not really show you anything, actually, just put a visual up, Mr. Briscoe, if you could help us understand, because part of it is just simply understanding what we're seeing. So Mike, if you could, or could you push, go to the next slide, please? So again, just like Mr. Briscoe, I didn't count on a crowd this large, but what you're looking at is some, the dormant accounts. You heard a lot about dormant accounts. In 2024, this is straight numbers from the report. The dormant accounts said there were 1,442 dormant accounts for a total budget of 11.94 million and total uncommitted balance of 11.94 million. That's, so of course that got our attention. So Mike has worked very hard, both of us have worked hard to get this together. Again, it is not comprehensive, we aren't even close to being through all the data, but we're trying. So, and we took the exact same data, looked in USAS off our records, and instead of 1,442 dormant accounts, there are 98 total dormant accounts, of which 21 of them are from the general fund. It's not 11, it's not 11.94 million, it's 1.54 million, of which, of that 1.54 million, 1 million of it was encumbered carrying over from the year before, which might not have been easy to see from his vantage point. Overbudgeted in 2024, he said there were 3,367 accounts overbudgeted at 6.54 million, with total transactions at 33.1 million, to run a deficit of 26.56 million. Those are from his report. We went through that. There are not 3,367 accounts, there are four accounts, that total $267,000. But they were what's called advances. And in Ohio, you can do an advance, legal advance, I don't like them, they, our finance department knows, I don't like them, and we're gonna do the best we can to reduce them, but you can't always foresee it. But an advance is not budgeted, so it's not gonna show up as a budget. So that $267,000 is actually total uncommitted balance is zero. 2024 transactions with no budget, the report is 2,414 at 23.84 million with a deficit of 23.84 million. There were actually 16 accounts, four of them were advances, what I just explained to you, and 12, the other 12 were carryover from the prior year. And that was largely due to construction, and the total cost of that was $440,000. Go to the next slide. And then we, the last piece that we took a look at, we went where there was that variance that we focused on overspend. So when we appropriate for a budget, we hope we underspend. By God, I hope we do. That's how you build your cash balance. So we're, and it's hard to know, like, for example, if we take John's maintenance, we look back the last three years, try to best guess how much we're gonna spend, but I don't know if a roof's gonna fall in. He doesn't know if a roof's gonna fall in. There can be expenditures that you just simply missed because you couldn't budget for them because you didn't know they were coming. We do our best not to, you know, be as close and as accurate as we can, so coming under budget is not a concern to me. That's how we build our reserves, eat into our reserves at a slower pace. But, so we just focused on the two over, and in 2020, there was 55.6 million appropriated with expenditures at 67.9 million. So of course, that easy math, it looks like we overspent $12 million. But the reality is, 17.8 million of it was carryover encumbrances from fiscal year 2019 construction projects. But you wouldn't, didn't catch that part. So in fact, we actually were under budget, not over budget. And 2021, 57.2 million, 58.6 million is, was the expenditure, so that's a 1.36 million overspend. And 2021, our data was we appropriated 63.1 million, so we don't have the same number for what was appropriated. I'm not sure how that happened. And then expenditures, we do have the same number for expenditures, but that ends up being a $4.5 million underspend with 2.4 million additional dollars that were actually carryover. So that ended up being pretty close to $7 million in underspend that was reported as a overspend. So again, there's no question, and I want to make sure you all understand, there's some really good stuff in there, and there are some stuff that we, some things pointed out in that report that we need to do and we need to execute. And so this isn't beat up Mr. Briscoe, but this is, my job is to reflect the facts, and that's all I'm trying to do, is just report what I know. And so this is what I know to this point.
Thank you, thank you for that. And also, Board of Education Business, the Briscoe Financial Analysis, a resolution to accept the report from the Briscoe Consulting Group regarding its financial analysis and related work for the Riverside Local School District. Can I get a second?
Second.
Question?
I haven't had a chance to review it yet in completion. Do appreciate the walkthrough, but I would still like to dig into it more, so I would like to see if somehow we could postpone this so that we have time to look through it before we accept it.
Can always make adjustments later if you want to, but I would suggest we accept it, so can you take the role? Can you take the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fishel?
Aye.
Ms. Brewster?
Aye.
Ms. Kreninski?
Nay.
Mrs. Grassi?
Nay.
Mr. Keeney?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay. Next item, we have RoofConnect Resolution to Award Construction Contract to RoofConnect Logistics, Inc., DBA RoofConnect for roofing improvements at Riverside High School, JR Williams Junior High School, Lamuth Middle School, Parkside Elementary School, Riverview Elementary School under Ohio Revised Code 167.081. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have some questions, obviously. Where are we paying for this from?
So this will be paid for out of the general fund.
So I would just like to read this sentence that's on, I don't know, there's no page numbers on this. Do we have a total amount on this contract?
Mr. McIntyre just brought something over to us that the pricing had changed. Can you, because she wasn't available?
Yeah, there's a copy in front of you, Belinda, but the total contract is $3,065,365.
So 3 million, can we say that again? Where is it?
Yeah, 3 million. 65.
3 million, 65,365, and I want to read something out of this, out of this contract. Once the project is awarded, any required architectural or engineering services, as well as builder's risk insurance, will be invoiced for immediate payment. Payment in full will be due within three business days of signing.
Okay, if you're gonna interrupt the meeting, we're gonna clear the room. That's the last warning.
I'm going to continue.
One more, one more time, we're gonna clear the room. Don't interrupt, please.
If the customer cancels this agreement at any time for any reason, the customer shall pay a cancellation fee equal to 50% of the total contract price. Customer, yeah, this is, and customer acknowledges and agrees that all payments are irrevocable and non-refundable. So within three days of the signing of this contract, we are going to fork over $3,065,365 to somebody we have never even had an opportunity to discuss, vet, nor anything else. Are you kidding me? In an irrevocable contract that we can't get any money back, and if we decide not to go forward with the work, we are going to pay an additional 50% penalty? That's a terrible contract, folks.
Okay, Ms. Lenahan is here from RoofConnect, and so could you go ahead and explain what we're doing here?
Sure. Yeah, so, Ms. Hassan? Is it on now? You hear me? Good evening, everyone. I, is it okay? You hear me? Okay. I'm here just to share with you this opportunity that is very unique and very timely for this school district. We are looking to do 25-year roofs that are sustainable without a tear-off for a very aggressive price, and we have confirmation that after me for a year and a half trying to find an investor for solar to do a power purchase agreement with this school district, the savings opportunity through this is upwards of $10 million. I understand, Ms. Grassi, I understand your concern, and I'd like a minute to explain it. I don't know if Alice is here, but I talked to a constituent earlier today, and I shared that I am not your adversary. I, I'm from Youngstown, Ohio. I graduated from Corbin, Ohio, and I have a heart for this part of the state. There are solar deals going on in other places all the time because they're not up here. The problem with solar up here is not that we don't generate enough power, it's that we don't use enough power. So the investor can never get their money back because you're not using enough power. So it's very hard, and I have, in a year and a half, I was unable to find an investor that would do this in your district. The reason being... The reason being, what I was trying to do on the front end was get them to incorporate your roofs into the PPA. And they wouldn't touch it because the numbers just went and blend. So as we got closer to the end of the Inflation Reduction Act, so Inflation Reduction Act was put into place by the Biden administration. And what it did was it allowed for very significant rebates on solar programs to be available to the public sector. Whereas previously, it had only been available to the private sector through tax incentives. The public sector doesn't pay taxes, so it wasn't available to them. But the administration put something in where you would get a direct rebate check of a minimum of 30% with possible adders based on economic conditions of your community or if you were a former energy community, you know, like whole community, anything like that. So as soon as that Inflation Reduction Act was put into place, it took the IRS a little while. Did it go off? Did I, did I do something? I'm sorry. I think it died. Is that possible? I'll try to yell. I'm a little nervous, I have to say. So once that Inflation Reduction Act came into place, it took the IRS quite a while to figure out the tax ramifications. And as soon as that happened, I was like, I got to get this to the schools in Northeast Ohio because this is an amazing opportunity. A lot of them are having a lot of trouble. They can't pass levies and they can't do anything with their buildings. This is an opportunity for them to get free roofing, essentially free. I can't use that word because in the power purchase agreement, it pays for it, right? But essentially with 30% rebate that the investor was getting on the roofing and the solar, it was a very, very good opportunity. And I told everybody, if I can find an investor, you can't lose. No investor will touch a project unless they're going to be able to come out of the chute selling you electricity for less than you're paying and having an accelerator that's significantly less than you're going to be paying. So they don't want to have buyer's remorse, right? So nobody would touch the projects up here. I couldn't get anything. And I know this sounds crazy and I apologize for this timing. But we had, the IRA is coming to an end. As you, I don't know if you realize this, but the Trump administration canceled it. It's over. Summer 31st, done. But you, we can, we can get under the wire. There's something called safe harboring and it's, it's just a bunch of legal stuff that I, I don't want to get into. But at the end of the day, I was able to find an investor that couldn't carry all the roofs. But if Riverside could cover that much of it, they would go into an agreement. The roofs you have, just for the record, I had three subject matter experts on your roofs, summer of '24. They're really bad at the campus here. I mean, really bad. We're, they're very close to being completely saturated and needing a tear off. But they're not there. They're not there yet. And we can put, the solar investors approve of certain roofs. And they approve of, of these roofs that are water resilient. And we build the roof when we're up there. And they mandate a 25-year roof. That's not cheap. So we have to buy warranty, right? We have to buy warranty above manufacturers, right? So, but the investor has to have that because their panels are 25-year panels. And they, we can't be moving panels for roofing, okay? So this investor was willing to enter into a power purchase agreement with this school district if they carried that much of the roofing. Those roofs would cost you way more than that. You would fill probably 200 to 300 yards of dumpsters with that roof. This makes it a sustainable roof. You will never have to replace it. You will never have to tear it off. It is sustainable and it doesn't count as a roof. That's a permit situation. So what's happening here is the investor is holding my feet to the fire. We are coming to the end of the Inflation Reduction Act. The only way you're ever going to get solar in this district is with the IRA. Because the investor gets the 30% rebate on the 5 million he's putting into your project, right? He gets that rebate. But here's the good news. You guys get a 30% rebate on what you're putting in. So as soon as that solar project starts going, you're going to get $1 million back. So you're going to end up spending $2 million replacing 75-year-old roofs, making them completely sustainable, putting solar on, getting reduced electric rates. At the end of the day, your output is going to be $2 million because you're getting back, I'm not doing the exact math, but you're getting back 30% in rebate dollars from the Inflation Reduction Act. These are all part of the opportunity. But the investor, you know, we have to show that the roof is paid for. They have to know that or they're not going to do it. And so we're hurrying to do that. I have the PPA, by the way, ready to be signed. Once that roof is, is committed and paid for, you'll get back 30%. You'll get solar on all of those roofs. You have a power purchase agreement starting at less than you're paying now with a 2% accelerator. And I have worked a year and a half to find this and to get them down into a place that would make you very happy and save your district a lot of money. Where that money that you would have been spending on power and roofs, you can reinvest in whatever is, is needed. I see a thumbs down and I see a shaking head. But that's the reality of it, guys. It's the best deal you're going to ever see. You will never have solar without it. You will never get those roofs for $2 million. Your roofs are 75 years old. I don't even want to think about the kind of mold, the moisture it's holding. You have leaks all over your building. You have to get a roof. You have to. You're almost in emergency situation, quite honestly. So this is a great opportunity for your district to save upwards of $10 million. Yes?
Can you explain a little bit more about the solar, the, 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 the?
Yeah, so the solar investor is willing to pay and put solar panels and absorb a little bit of roofing cost, put solar panels on all.
What goes beyond the solar panels? Solar panels, is it there?
Yeah.
But they have to collect the energy, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What is, is it incorporated with the, just the solar panels?
Okay, if I think I understand you. The investor pays for, those are his panels. He is relying 100% on those being used by you and the amounts that we have collected. We've collected data for over a year, right? They have to be functioning perfectly. You are only paying for what you use, right? You are not paying for the panels. You are not paying for interconnection. You are not paying for engineering. You are not paying for any of that. The investor takes care of it all. He ensures them. He checks them every year. He checks your roof every year. Roofing on those buildings is off your budget for 25 years.
So let me add to that. So with the solar panels and with us getting a lower rate per kilowatt hour, when you project that over 20 years or so, it's about a $2 million savings in electric use. Okay, with prices going up the way they are, a lot of people say it's from the AI, whatever, it's going, we are seeing accelerated increases in electric costs. So the $2, the $2 million is probably low. The other thing is the roofs, I think the Bielowski Engineers Report showed we had to do like seven or eight mil, not had to, but it would cost about seven to eight million dollars to replace the roofs. And so we're already having approximately four to five million dollars in savings upfront and that doesn't count the million dollars that would be projected to come back. So this opportunity is never going to happen again. This is a once in a lifetime and we either do it or lose it.
So can I ask a couple of questions? Mr. Allessa, have you reviewed this at all in your? Okay, so we've talked about roofs many times. Is, I have two questions. First of all, if I understand this correctly, we're basically leasing our roofs to the person who's getting the tax credit and then we have to pay for the right for them to use our roof. And then we also have to pay for the electricity that's generated by the solar panel that he's, that the investor is probably going to take the excess electricity and sell it? Is that how I understand these deals to work?
I wouldn't say that. What I would say is, so these solar investors, there are many of them and they're, they're, you know, doing these, these projects all over the United States. What they do is they, there are situations where they do do it as a lease. In Ohio, we can't do that. So they do a power purchase agreement and basically what they're doing is they, their, their panels are getting the power, right? They're paying $5 million to put panels on your roof. They're, they're insuring their panels, they're maintaining their panels, they're connecting, they're dealing with the grid. You don't have to deal with any of that. It's what they do every day. The power that they're collecting, they are providing to you. You're using that power. So it's, it's very nice. One thing I was sharing with one of your residents today is when that power is generated at the point of usage, it's not coming through those dirty lines. So if, I don't know if anybody knows, electricity comes through very busy lines and it, it's dirty. And it reduces the life of everything that runs off of it because it has like, it's like dirt in there. This power is being created right at the point of usage, as clean as clean can be. And all of your, everything running off of it will last longer. That's a savings we don't really talk about. But if your HVAC units get two extra years on them, that's a lot. Because the cost of ownership of HVAC stuff is a lot. So, so they've basically done their math. How are we going to pay for everything upfront? And they figure out, well, we'll only do the project if we can charge less and save a money. So they create a power purchase agreement. Everybody's a winner. Are they making money? Yes, they're making money. They're investors. Are they paying in? Yes, they are. But at the same time, you're saving money.
So we don't own, we don't own the solar panels. We also don't own the battery cells that the solar energy goes into to create the electricity. So we don't own the electricity that's being generated by the solar panel.
So I don't think, I don't know if there'll be any batteries in your arrays because batteries are super expensive and your demand, we'll, we'll, they'll figure out the best way to do it because remember, they got to get their money back, right? So they're going to figure out the most efficient way to do this. It's, it's on them.
I know, I, I, again, maybe I'm not asking my question clearly. We are, we are not using all of the electricity generated by the solar panels on the roof. There's.
Yes, you will, yeah. You're going to use all the panels. See, the, the power company won't let them put more on than you use. So, so they, they can't do that. Now, you're talking about, are there times when they'll go back to the grid? I don't think so. The, the development we've had here, you're going to use it all. You're going to use it all. Because they won't let us develop more than you're going to use at this time. Maybe someday down the road they will. And if they do, they give you, they pay you.
And that, I have a couple of more questions. Dr. Thompson, is there, is there any legality to us paying in advance for something we haven't received yet? I would imagine that a contract of $3 million in nature, we're not going to be able to pay an expenditure of that nature now for something we don't have.
I would defer to our attorney.
Yeah.
So the way we protect the district from a default is to have what's called a charity bond, a performance bond. And it is where the contractor, the vendor purchases through a qualified insurance company, an insurance policy that guarantees the performance of the work in the event of a default.
But does that allow us to actually sign a purchase order and write a check on? I, I've not, I've not been in a situation where we're actually allowed to write checks for things that we don't, haven't received yet, regardless of insurance, like.
I will tell you, other school districts do a lot of.
So, and, and I guess part of my problem with this whole thing is that we as a board of education haven't not ever once talked about this at a board table and it's being sprung again here at the last minute so that we can, we can spend $3 million. And I'm not saying that this is a bad project. Don't get me wrong. Like, I, but I would have no idea because we haven't talked about it. And we're trying to talk about it now, but we're really not talking about it. This is a long-term conversation that this district should have been having and we're not having it. And here at the last minute, they, like, people want us to sign $3 million. I, I, I can't do that. I can't do that without seeing some of that data, without seeing, without seeing some of those reports that, like, that tell us how much savings we've done. Well, we did our windows, even though like it might, under House Bill 265, windows HVAC, I can't remember what it was. Don't.
It's Bill 264.
So, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
We, we, we researched that for a long time. We had lots of conversations with the vendor and the people who are coming to do that project for us. We, that was a, that was lengthy. It wasn't just, it wasn't a five-minute conversation. And again, I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you at all, it's just, this is crazy stuff. Like, we can't, we can't do this at the board table.
Is there, is there anything else?
Yes, I would like to ask Dr. Thompson. Can you show us how this impacts our general fund?
Well, all I, all I modeled again is not whether or not the project is, is a good thing or a bad thing. I didn't, I, I can't model that. And I don't know that I modeled the right dollar amount. I modeled what was in the Briscoe report, which was 4.6 million. So I modeled that along with the 1.2 million reduction that we're seeing in fiscal year '26 from the county commissioners and the tax relief. So those two things I put together and modeled that. I can show that, but it is not a, it's not a statement of whether roofs, you know, doing this project is good or not good. It's just what is the financial impact?
Yeah, I just, where's your experience with, I mean, have you had experience with this?
I've had experience in going about as far as you've gone here in a previous district. We didn't have to put roofs on. It was when we built all of our new schools, that's when they wanted to come in and do the solar. But it just, at the end, like the last minute, I guess they couldn't get the investors to do it. And so we didn't do it. That's the reason we didn't move forward. I would have moved forward with it, but.
But again, I don't think it's a question, this could be a good opportunity, but this bring a 3.6 million contract on us. I mean, literally.
So it's 3,600. Sorry.
But what does that look, yes, what does that look like to our general fund at the?
And you'll get a million back, no, don't forget that.
Well, when is the million?
So again, please understand when I, you know, I built this, we built this just over the last 35 hours or so. So can you, so the, the goal was, it was a question to me, proposed to me from the board, to provide a board with a clear financial assessment regarding the proposed transfer of 4.6 million. I thought this was about, from my perspective, was the transfer of the funds to the general fund, to the PI, and, and then the associated resolutions as I understood them. I didn't know any, I didn't know about, at that point, the million dollars coming back. That is not modeled in here. That's not modeled in here. Go ahead. So the board is considering this transfer and certainly they're, they're legal. They do materially impact based on what I know here, not necessarily what I heard here tonight, but what I know, what I knew previously, it has a material disruption to our financial standing. Go ahead. So I come, so I, we're looking, I looked at five different things. And the impact of the county property tax, which has nothing to do with the conversation tonight, you may not even be aware that it occurred, but our county commissioners, what, less than a month ago, roughly, somewhere in there, voted to approve a tax relief for certain tax, or homeowners inside of Lake County. So the impact for Riverside schools is one, a reduction of 1.2 million a year starting this fiscal year. We'll, we'll lose 600,000 the following year, 1.2 million, 1.2 million, 1.2 million. And I want to make sure you understand, there are compounding expenditures and one-time expenditures. A compounding expenditure means 1.2 million, 2.4, 3.6, 4.8. It's compounding itself. This is compounding. This is compounding, doing roofs is a one-time expenditure. So they're, they're different. Okay? There is likely a permanent revenue loss, not previously incorporated into the cap, into that capital planning or the five-year forecast, because what, what the county commissioners did was they have to, they, they can reconvene next year and take the rollback back, but we, we've been advised to financially look at it as if this is gonna be a continuing loss of revenue. So that's how I modeled it. We are currently in deficit spending. Again, we're not in a deficit. We have cash reserves, but we're currently spending more money than we bring in. The proposed transfer would immediately reduce the general fund cash balance, of course, by $4.6 million. Okay? And based on current modeling of the combination of the $4.6 million and the $1.2 million annual revenue reduction and ongoing structural deficits, so the combination would likely require the district to place an operating levy on the ballot as early as November of The PI projects identified, they are legitimate, and they are needed, folks. There is zero question, I, I'm sorry, I missed your name. Melanie is, I, I know she's spot on. Our roofs are bad. Our buildings are, not all of them, some of them are gorgeous, but one you're sitting in, to me, as the new guy, are, is unacceptable. It's unacceptable, and I think it's hurting student enrollment. I think it's hurting the economic development of this community. It, it needs to be addressed, and it's unfair to the students that the experience isn't what it should be. Let's just say that. Okay? But they're not emergency repairs, at least not yet. Could be tomorrow, could be tomorrow, but it's not right today. And of course, they don't support instructional, instruction, unless, of course, it's leaking in the classroom, then it certainly would. So the opportunity for the treasurer's office to present an in-depth, in-depth update of the five-year forecast, and what we need to take a look at, and we're, we're starting that now, this is what I'm showing you now, we'll show you in a minute, is just a very quick, very rough overview, but, you know, there are definitely new revenue conditions. We have the capital projects that need done to include these roofs. We'll go into negotiations with the teachers, all the unions soon. We have long-term solvency projections, and then, and then it gives the board an opportunity to fully digest all of this, which is a lot. So, so this is really the bottom line. So when you see the word pause, that means, that mean, this line, this first column is with the $1.2 million in reductions. That's in both. This one just, this one just absorbs a $4.6 million transfer. But what you see is I would, I'm projecting in fiscal year '26, that we would have a $716,000 overall deficit. The state does not let you have a deficit.
Just one thing, you said '26, but you mean '28.
I'm sorry, I, I, no, thanks, I, thank you. No, I meant '28, sorry, my bad. '28 shows a $716,000 deficit. So obviously, we wouldn't let that happen, but we'd have to make significant reductions to keep out of that, or pass a levy, or both is probably the likely, likelihood. Now, it, we have the same, we have a $4 million deficit in '29, which I'll be projecting whether we do these roofs or we don't do these roofs. So we are levy imminent. Either way, this, but I was asked, what does it do? This is what it does. So that's either palatable to you, or it is not palatable to you. Maybe the trade-off of roofs at, and roofs at, if we were to get the million dollars back to do that much square footage on a roof, and I know, I'm no roofing expert, so I don't really, I don't claim to understand what they're doing exactly, but I can tell you that one high school in, that, where I worked, where in 2020, we put a new roof on a building, probably maybe three-quarters the size of just Riverside High School, five years ago, was $2.8 million to put a new roof on it. So clearly, to have that many roofs done at that price is, is a, is a good, is a good thing, but you have to juxtapose that against the reality of right here, fiscal, the very last minute, you, if you can be on the ballot and not be, this is called state receivership. This is a state coming in and taking you over. The very last year we would have to avoid that would be fiscal year '27. We'd have to pass in fiscal year '27, or we would be in, in major financial trouble, we would, while we'd be taken over.
Okay, so this is based on the 4.6, so can you rework this? And then also, it doesn't factor in if there is an expenditure of 3 million, that when does the 1 million?
30%. I'm sure you're familiar with the IRA rebates.
So, but what's the timing of that return?
As soon as, as soon as the solar project is turned on, you know, when, when, as soon as the interconnection happens.
And, and what do you consider the timeframe of that happening?
So your roofs will be put, in fact, you were talking about the expenditure, and I will tell you that as soon as this, as soon as this check goes through, you will have $1.4 million product delivered to your facility. You will be in, you will be in possession of it, so you will have it. And, and then it, with this particular product, it's a little different than ours, because we build it on top, so I have to be at 50 degrees and climbing. So as soon as that's ready, as soon as we're at 50 degrees and climbing, and it's okay with your schedule, now this also is very quiet, no chemicals, no awful smells, nothing like that. So we put this roof on all the time with the kids at school. It's not, it doesn't interfere, and it's not noisy, you know, because we're not banging and everything. So 50 and climbing, the roofs will go on. We use as many crews as, as necessary to move along. In the, while that's going on, as soon as this is signed, soon, I will have a power purchase agreement in your hands, and when you agree to that, everything goes. The, they start with interconnection, so during the winter, they'll be able to do all that stuff that doesn't involve any kind of construction, and, and then we're at the mercy of the utility, of course. However, in Ohio, they are very, they're a little more cooperative, because our grid is toast. So they're happy to get it off, off the grid, they're happy to get the help. So it'll, it, it should move along fairly.
So you're saying a year?
Oh, yeah, oh, oh, oh.
Within a year?
Oh, yes.
That's the answer.
Probably September or so.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And then, just looking at the, oh, sorry.
Yeah, as soon as interconnection, so we'll, we'll help you with all the IRA paperwork, we'll help you with that, and then as, as soon as interconnection, and you, you fill it up, you send it off to them, and you show where it connected, our solar project is, we're on, we're on the grid, is rebate time.
Okay, so this, so that everybody understands, this includes Riverside High School, John R., because it's the whole complex, Lamuth, Parkside, and River View.
Because what, the question I have is, why are we looking at all the buildings? Do we have options to look at one building? Do we, you know, like, that's, that's what we haven't had time to talk about, is this roof, yes, we know this roof.
Yeah.
Needs some love, but we've never talked about it, we've never had a chance. You've done a great job explaining it to us, but I, I don't know, it's like somebody coming to your house and saying, hey, we spent $3 million, I need a little time, right? This isn't even our money, it's our taxpayers' money, so.
It's just unfortunate, because the IRA ends, and I apologize for that, and I will tell you, I was shocked that we got an investor to bite. It's been out there in the portal for a year and a half.
But I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's unfortunate. What I think is unfortunate is that somebody has probably been having these conversations, but it certainly hasn't been all board members. So we haven't had that conversation at Buildings and Grounds that I'm aware of, we haven't had that conversation here at the table.
Our director of maintenance is not aware.
And if, if those conversations were happening, they should have been happening with this full board, so that we could have been fully aware of what's happening, so that we could have been ready to make a decision at this point. But we are not, because we haven't done that. We haven't done our due diligence, and I, regardless of the tax implications, implications, and too bad for the investor, but like, I'm not the investor. Who is the investor?
I, I can't say that right now, sorry. But I'll have, as soon as.
Okay, so, one more time, okay, one more time, and you're gonna leave. So please do not interrupt, okay? This isn't a community involvement, this is a board meeting, and you're observing. Okay? You can't be interrupting, please.
I will, I can handle that for you by the end of the night, okay? By the end of the night, I can handle it.
Be respectful to the person who's here.
Oh, my goodness, we just haven't had, we haven't had time to absorb this data, we haven't had time to say, well, you know, maybe we should just do one roof. Maybe we do, maybe we do it as a, as a, so, you know, like, as a, as an example, and let's see what happens, let's, let's test it out. I mean, it's not like, it sounds like a bad idea, I've often thought, maybe I should do that to my house, yeah, I agree. But, but.
I will tell you, these investors won't touch projects that small, this was as small as I could get them.
Well, I have seen, I have seen that, like, I, I'm very well aware of, of how tax credits work and, and all kinds of different scenarios and environments, but again, we are not a, we are not an investor, and we are dealing with public funds. That's, that's, that's just a big decision to be making about what our, what our general fund is going to look like.
So we're gonna be saving at least $8 million, and, and so this opportunity will never come again. And so I, I've been in the roofing industry for 49 years now, and worked very hard, and our maintenance director, Rich Arlesic, we've had discussions, we've had different people from different companies out here looking at the roofs, we've spoken about that in Buildings and Grounds. So there have been conversations going on for a year, okay, actually, more than a year.
But if they talk about this.
And, and this type, this type of opportunity, you don't bring it to the table and talk about it when, when it's not available yet, okay? So now with the changes in the Inflation Reduction Act, and it being terminated, and in this particular location in northeast Ohio, we don't get a lot of sunlight, there's not gonna be very much opportunity for solar, solar investors to do this sort of thing. Solar investors are charging us zero. We are getting the benefit, and we are not paying for it. This is, this doesn't get any simpler. So that's what I would add. Okay?
And I just want to remind you that you've got to get new roofs anyway.
Well, they're, they're 50, 60, and 75 years old, okay? We are in a dire situation on this roofing. Most of your roofs last 30 years, if you take care of them, okay? We, we can't wait any longer on the roofs, okay? Water does a lot of damage. I'm sure all of you here, if you have water coming in your roofs at home and in your child's bedroom, you wouldn't just let it go, okay, because it causes more damage, and it causes more mold, and it creates an unhealthy environment. And I'll just add to that, the unhealthy environment, like we had with the trailers, the classroom trailers over at Buckeye, had mold in the walls when we took them down. That's unacceptable. When water's coming in your roofs and in your, in your buildings, like, you see the watermarks on the ceiling tile? Yeah, we have water coming in. We have water coming in a lot of buildings. In the last Buildings and Grounds meeting we had, Mr. Arlesic, our maintenance director, said, what'd he say? We had to do a plethora of roof repairs last month. Not one or two, a plethora, he said. Okay? We are running into the serious danger zone. We have to do something, okay? It has to be done.
So, so.
Okay, Steve, can you take the roll, please?
We're running into.
Can you take the roll, please?
No, I, I have.
Okay, we're, we're gonna take the roll.
No, I have more to say.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna take the roll, please.
So we, we have been running into this issue where we have things that need to be addressed, however, we had the opportunity a number of years ago to get a new high school, and why would I want to put this money?
Mr. Keeney.
Into a, into a building that we should be replacing.
Mr. Fischel.
Aye.
Ms. Kreninski.
Nay.
Mrs. Grassi.
Absolutely nay.
Ms. Brewster.
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-2.
Okay, so the motion is carried. I know, Ms. Brewster, are you gonna be leaving?
Yeah.
You're gonna go? Okay, so, so we're, we're gonna recess in a moment, but first, we have another item of business. We have a resolution to approve and authorize a fee and service agreement with Stifel Nicolaus and Company for underwriting services in connection with the Riverside local school district's certificates of participation and/or tax anticipation notes. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, discussion.
Is there an amount on that?
15 million is what the board approved.
No, no, there is no agreement.
Oh, I, I, oh, I see what you're saying here, the, yeah, so.
Just motion to postpone.
Postpone this motion, because you don't actually have the contract. Okay, my mistake, little lack of communication, and I thought we had that, we don't have it yet. Okay, so that'll be the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so we eliminate that, cannot vote on it, because we don't have it. Okay, so I'll take a, a brief recess, and, did you bring the contracts we're finishing?
You have, everybody has them.
Can you just move over, and we'll, we'll sign them now, and take just a brief recess.
We're having a recess for what? For what purpose? We're recessing, are we adjourning?
That's it, no, no, it's, it's just gonna be a couple minutes. The 2B item is, is gonna be the last, and then before adjournment, and just take a couple moments here.
I'm not sure. I don't know. She's. Oh, we can get it. But I don't think, I don't.
Steve there, and me here, next to each other? So I just put underneath. I have a clue who you are. I'm sorry, you can't interrupt the meeting. You cannot, you, you, if you want to leave, if you want to leave, you're not gonna interrupt. You're not interrupting. You have no place to, you're not adjourning the meeting. And you are not allowed to talk. You are not allowed. And you sit there, you're not, right now, you're not, you're not allowed to talk. You can, you can, okay? Don't, I'm not, I'm not.
Sorry!
Okay? You're on line.
It might be too early.
No committee, Cory, yeah. Huh? Do we call it now? They want to say hi before.
I mean, I haven't even had the discussion to put something like that together, but I mean, eighty-four percent of our budget is people and sixteen percent of our budget's are going through. You know, and you know, think about seven hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, a five million dollar reduction, what that means, how many people that is. I've been through it more times than I would have ever liked. This district's been through it too. Two thousand thirteen, fourteen, somewhere in there, I think.
Sure. Oh, okay, I guess that's bad. Somehow I forget.
You know, we just made it down the road around that bit. I disagree.
Okay, we're back in session. Okay, we're to the special report by the board president update. Okay, so what I'm presenting is already public information and copies can be obtained through a public information request from our treasurer. So what I will share with you is there are three documents that are in the record and I would confirm that with our board attorney, right, Mr. McIntyre? We have a twenty, August first, twenty twenty-three to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four Superintendent Performance Evaluation. So that's in the record and you can get that. That was written by Ms. Grassi and there's a point person and that person gathers the information from the board members and they author the report which includes some other items, ideas of improvement and, and things like that. So anyway, that was a sixty-one percent grade. The August first, twenty twenty-four to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five was authored by Ms. Brewster and that was a sixty percent grade. The, what I'm reading here is what is termed a pre-discipline, pre-termination meeting conference demand and this was put together for an executive session on December four, twenty twenty-five. And while that was executive session, it is now public record, right, Mr. McIntyre? Yeah? So it can be shared. So it has some verbiage in it and then it says, "At this pre-discipline, pre-termination meeting conference, you shall have the opportunity," and this is of course to Dr. Rotino, "to respond to the following allegations which are serious in nature and set forth below in no particular order. You currently hold a five-year professional superintendent license, a five-year professional high school seven through twelve license, and five-year professional principal license with the Ohio State Board of Education, each of which expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. You are currently appointed and employed by the board in the position of Superintendent pursuant to RC three-three-one-nine-point-oh-one employment contract that expires on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Pursuant to RC three-three-one-nine-zero-one Board Policy eleven-hundred, Board Policy eleven-twenty, Board Policy eleven-thirty, Board Policy twelve-hundred, Board Policy twelve-ten, Board Policy twelve-twenty, Board Policy twelve-thirty, and other applicable laws, you serve as the Professional Advisor, Executive Officer, and Administrative Officer for the board. Pursuant to RC three-three-one-nine-point-oh-one Board Policy twelve-forty, Board Policy twelve-forty-point-oh-one, Board Policy twelve-ten, and other applicable laws, the board has adopted procedures for your evaluation and has evaluated you in accordance with those procedures. Copies of your evaluations have been provided to you, are part of your personnel file, and are attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. Pursuant to Board Policy twelve-ten and other applicable laws, the board has established goals for you through annual evaluations of your performance. Copies of your goals have been provided to you, are part of your personnel file, and are attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. Pursuant to Board Policy twelve-ten and other applicable laws, the board has, whenever possible, relied upon the objective outcomes of your evaluations rather than on subjective opinions in formulating the board's position regarding your performance. Pursuant to Board Policy twelve-forty-point-oh-one and other applicable laws, your services have been found by the board to be unsatisfactory. You have been notified of such unsatisfactory conditions. You have been given an opportunity to correct such unsatisfactory conditions. Your service continues to be unsatisfactory and you have been notified of such continued unsatisfactory conditions. By way of example only, the board provided you with an average percentage rating of just over approximately sixty-one percent for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year evaluation, which addresses deficiencies in your communication with the board. A copy of this evaluation has been provided to you, is part of your personnel file, and is attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. By way of example only, the board provided you with performance objectives for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year evaluation including, but not limited to, your communication deficiencies with the board. A copy of these performance objectives has been provided to you, are part of your personnel file, and are attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. By way of example only, the board provided you with an average percentage rating of approximately sixty percent for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year evaluation, which addresses deficiencies in your communication with the board. A copy of this evaluation has been provided to you, is part of your personnel file, and is attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. By way of example only, the board provided you with the performance objectives for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year evaluation including, but not limited to, your communication deficiencies with the board. A copy of these performance objectives has been provided to you, are part of your personnel file, and are attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. By way of example only, the board provided you with a mid-year evaluation for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which addresses deficiencies in your communication with the board. A copy of this evaluation has been provided to you, is part of your personnel file, and is attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. Even though the board only speaks through its minutes and the board voted to proceed with the Buckeye Building Project pursuant to a specific plan, your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to a deliberate attempt to sabotage the will of the board with respect to the Buckeye Building Project. Your same, your actions and inactions jointly and severally caused the board to violate the Ohio Sunshine Laws, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-four, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-five, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-six, and Board Bylaw zero-one-six-nine-point-two, and other applicable laws by allowing a sham board meeting to be coordinated and conducted on November eighth, twenty twenty-five, which was initially designated as a special board meeting for the purposes of taking formal action to rescind the prior formal action taken by the board with respect to the Buckeye Building Project. And it makes reference to a YouTube video that could be accessed to, to view that. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally caused the board to violate the Ohio Sunshine Laws, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-four, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-five, Board Bylaw zero-one-six-six, and Board Bylaw zero-one-six-nine-point-two, and other applicable laws by allowing a sham board meeting to be coordinated and conducted on November eighth, twenty twenty-five, which was initially designated as a special board meeting for the purposes of taking formal action to rescind the prior formal action taken by the board with, with respect to the Buckeye Building Project and then immediately converting the same to a community listening session on November eighth, twenty twenty-five, to discuss taking formal action to rescind the formal action taken by the board with respect to the Buckeye Building Project, which you then caused such discussions to be recorded and disseminated to the public online. Again, it references an access to, for it to be viewed online. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amounted to improper communication with stakeholders in the Buckeye Building Project, including but not limited to Satsina and Associates, LLC, that were intended to undermine and in fact undermine the prior formal action taken by the board with respect to the Buckeye Building Project. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally caused the Buckeye Building Project to not go forward as planned in the prior formal action taken by the board. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally caused Satsina and Associates, LLC, to resign as the Municipal Advisor for the Board and from the Buckeye Building Project. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally violated the prior formal action taken by the board with respect to the Buckeye Building Project. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally are not protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. As you are a high-level employee, you were seeking to release and did release confidential information. You were not speaking as a private citizen. You were not speaking about a matter of public concern, but instead were speaking about internal personal disputes and grievances. Your speech is normally part of your job duties and/or you were, you were speaking in your official capacity. Your speech interfered with your job and your speech disrupted the board's interest in an efficient workplace. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally are not protected against retaliation for whistleblowing as you were not reporting to the board actions that are illegal, abusive, and/or violate specific public policies. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to perform your responsibilities as the Professional Advisor, Executive Officer, and Administrative Officer of the Board pursuant to RC three-three-one-nine-point-oh-one Board Policy eleven-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain unquestionably high standards of honesty, integrity, impartiality, and professional conduct pursuant to Board Policy eleven-thirty and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain the proper performance of school business and administration through the service of integrity, high ideals, and human understanding pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain high standards in your working relationships, in the provision of your professional leadership in the Riverside Local School District and community, and in the performance of your duties to recognize basic dignities of all individuals with whom you interact in the performance of your duties pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain high standards in your working relationships, in the provision of your professional leadership in the Riverside Local School District and community, and in the performance of your duties to seek and apply the knowledge and skills appropriate to your assigned responsibilities pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain high standards in your working relationships, in the provision of your professional leadership in the Riverside Local School District and community, and in the performance of your duties to keep in confidence legally confidential information pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain high standards in your working relationships, in the provision of your professional leadership in the Riverside Local School District and community, and in the performance of your duties to refrain from using your position or public property or permitting another person to use a public position or public property for partisan political purposes pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain standards of exemplary professional conduct and conform your behavior to the Code of Ethics as adopted from the American Association of School Administrators' Statement of Ethics for School Administrators by fulfilling your professional responsibilities with honesty and integrity pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain standards of exemplary professional conduct and conform your behavior to the Code of Ethics as adopted from the American Association of School Administrators' Statement of Ethics for School Administrators by implementing the board's policies and administrative rules and regulations pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your in, actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to maintain standards of exemplary professional conduct and conform your behavior to the Code of Ethics as adopted from the American Association of School Administrators' Statement of Ethics for School Administrators by avoiding the use of your position for personal gain through political, social, economic, and/or other influences pursuant to Board Policy twelve-hundred and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to administer the policies of the board pursuant to Board Policy twelve-ten and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to serve as the Professional Advisor, Executive Officer, and Administrative Officer to the board pursuant to Board Policy twelve-ten and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions jointly and severally amount to your failure to take responsibility for the development, supervision, and operation of the school program and facilities. for the development, supervision, and operation of the school program and facilities under the oversight of the board pursuant to Board Policy 1210 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to properly administer the Riverside Local School District pursuant to Board Policy 1220 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to strive to achieve the Riverside Local School District's goals pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to act as a proper role model, both in the school and outside the Riverside Local School District pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to act as the professional advisor, executive officer, and administrative officer of the board pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to direct and supervise the work of all the schools, offices, and employees of the board, except the treasurer, pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to take responsibility for any task performed by any designated subordinate employee pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to make all reports and recommendations to the board through your office pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to serve as the professional advisor, executive officer, and administrative officer of the board and be directly responsible to the board pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to support the majority position of the board when officially enacted pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to perform such duties as cooperatively identified and discussed with the board pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to, with the aid and cooperation of those directly concerned, issue such publications as are deemed necessary for the effective administration of the Riverside Local School District pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to outline procedures which will provide interpretive information about the schools to citizens pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to be directly responsible to the board for the performance of assigned duties and responsibilities pursuant to Board Policy 1230 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to comply with the statement of philosophy of the board pursuant to Board Policy 2110 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to comply with the facilities planning of the board pursuant to Board Policy 7100 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to comply with the public relations objectives of the board pursuant to Board Policy 9110 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to comply with the public relations objectives of the board pursuant to Board Policy 9120 and other applicable laws. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to violations of your employment contract with the board, including but not limited to the model conduct provisions of paragraph 16 of the same, which provides that. The superintendent acknowledges and agrees that the superintendent will maintain model conduct professionally and personally during the existence of this agreement or any extension of it. The superintendent's conduct to the contrary, including but not limited to unethical, immoral, or dishonorable behavior, will materially impede the superintendent's ability to supervise the public schools of the Riverside Local School District and discharge the other responsibilities of the office of superintendent in the manner required by the board. And the superintendent's breach of this provision will be grounds for termination under this agreement and Ohio law. A copy of this contract has been provided to you, is part of your personnel file, and is attached hereto and incorporated herein by the instant reference. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to violations of your job description. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to behave as a professional. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to serve as a positive role model. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to be responsible for preserving the dignity and integrity of your profession. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to practice your profession according to the highest ethical standards. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to adhere to the licensure code of professional conduct for Ohio educators. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to accurately report information regarding the Buckeye Building Project. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to your failure to take responsibility in whole or part for the allegations set forth herein, and instead you have asserted that any and all culpability rests with the board, including but not limited to board members Belinda Glavich-Gressi and Lori Korniski, Treasurer Stephen Thompson, and Board General Counsel Daniel M. McIntyre, but not you. Any action taken by the current board, including but not limited to discipline, termination, and/or non-renewal, will simply be undone once the new members of the board are sworn into office in January 2026, i.e., Belinda Glavich-Gressi, Joseph Audino, and Jimmy Lee Vires, and you are engaged in constitutionally protected speech. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to violations of the licensure code of professional conduct for Ohio educators, including but not limited to Principles 1, 1A, 3, 3A, 8, and 8B, which can be viewed at, and it gives a place where you can go online and view them. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to violations of written rules and regulations as set, as set forth by the board, including but not limited to Board Bylaws 0164, 0165, 0166, and 0169.2. Board Policies 1100, 1120, 1130, 1200, 1210, 1220, 1230, 1240, 1240.01, 1541, 2110, 7100, 9110, and 9120, and all applicable administrative guidelines, which can be viewed at, it gives a website. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to incompetency. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to inefficiency. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to dishonesty. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to insubordination. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to discourteous treatment of the public. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to neglect of duty. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to misfeasance, which is generally defined as the unintentional act of engaging in an action and/or duty but failing to perform the duty correctly. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to malfeasance, which is generally defined as intentional conduct that is wrongful and/or unlawful, especially by public employees. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to non-feasance, which is generally defined as the omission to perform a required duty and/or the failure to act when a duty to act existed. Your actions and inactions, jointly and severally, amount to just cause to both discipline you and terminate your employment with the board. And so that is the public record and a copy can be received upon request from our treasurer. And that ends my, my special report. And then we come to the next meeting announcement, which is Finance and Personnel, December 11th, 8:00 a.m. Buildings and Grounds, December 16th, 7:30 a.m. Board of Education Meeting, December 18th, at 6:00 p.m. Can I make a motion to adjourn at 7:30? Can I get a second?
Second.
Can you take the roll?
Yes. May I speak briefly?
Rotino! 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 Rotino!
Ms. Korniski.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Ms. Keating.
Riverside stands with Rotino! Woo! It's time to repetees on the ground in this meeting!
Ms. Brewster.
We're done!
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Grassi.
Riverside stands with Rotino!
Aye. Four-oh.
Okay, I didn't hear you say my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did. Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
You're a piece of shit!